...hours of 12 noon and 12 PM. I pulled up the, I'm sorry?
It's, right now it's noon to 10.
Yeah, that's 12 noon to 10 PM is in the code. The ABC website says Sunday sales are allowed in all wet areas in the state of Arkansas on Sunday from 10 AM to 12 AM.
To 12 AM?
Till midnight.
12 AM, yeah. So we'll need to modify that in our code book, bring it up to spec.
This is the clerical thing to, I mean, we're working under the state laws. The city can't supersede the state law.
Does it need to be done by resolution, Mr. Weaver? If they're changing a...
You have to change ordinance by ordinance.
It probably does need to be drafted into an ordinance. But I think Mr. DeVito is probably correct that the state is already preempting the field.
One of the, for those who are here know what I'm talking about, one of the stickies that we have for the council goals was to review all the code, to make sure that there are things that are outdated, they're updated. And particularly since the point Mr. DeVito made is valid, that, you know, we can't have anything that's less, more strict than what the state is. I don't think enforcement in this town's gonna be a problem because we don't get it in other areas. I think we'd just add that, make a note, and make that as one of the changes that when we go through the code at our workshops, that we'll make sure that that gets updated to the current state law.
Yes, ma'am.
Include, excuse me, liquor store sales too?
Didn't say that. By the statute it says...
Sunday sales of alcohol.
Hours of sale. And any retail, I guess it does. Espiritus, venus, I guess that's from the vine.
Sales of sale, right.
Malts or other intoxicated liquor after their, they're at 2 o'clock. Yeah? This basically deals with the hotel motel and restaurant business. Got specific sections, so it's, put it on your do list. Anyway, it was just little addendum to the tax.
And at the last meeting we talked about clarifying the portion of the code concerning what we mean of where that 10% collection is applied. We could do that at the same time if everyone's in agreement.
Anything else on that one? I took number seven off because I had nothing to do with getting this on the agenda with Mr. DeVito with the procedure for filling vacant council seats. I don't know, I don't have to have anybody to put something on there with, so seconding someone else's is, I didn't do it, so I had it taken off. If Mr. DeVito wants to put it back on the next one?
No hurry.
Okay. All right, that brings us to number, I guess, reassign number seven, which would be the operation manual for the finance department, which postponed to the next meeting. Is that correct? All right. Number eight is accounting software for the finance department. That one's still on board.
Seven, I think they're both the same. I move to postpone seven and eight until we have a finance director. Do we know when we're gonna have one?
We're working on it.
Postpone it till the September 1st meeting?
Second.
Okay. That drops down to number nine, which would be the policy manual issue for the police department. Sorry? There's no need for vote, it's not anything big. Mr. Powell, now you, you put that on the immediate agenda.
I just requested they put it back on. I don't remember who the two original signees were.
Find that out real quick. It was the personnel manual? That you added as number nine?
No, there was an item on the agenda talking about the police department approval of officers and a discussion that personnel manual overrode that, and there was never a decision made. And for the sake of clarifying everything, I'd like, wanted to sit back on the table. Never been...
You wanna do that without the chief here? I think it'd be prudent to have him here.
I just put it back on there to get it back on the agenda. Table can do with what they want to.
I move to discuss.
Second for sake of discussion.
Made and seconded? Motion's open, or the table's open to discuss.
Well, I think it's highly appropriate that the chief be here to discuss his policy manual. I mean, you know, there's a lot of knowledge and input there that we can gain from that, and we can save ourselves a lot of time by just asking that the chief be here for that discussion. I don't see what the rush is right now. We've got quite a bit ahead of us. We have people waiting out in the hall right now for us. We've got a number of other issues on the agenda. Let's just wait, let's ask the chief to attend, let's get his input. I think that's important. We're discussing his department. I think it's only appropriate that he should be here.
Ms. Balance.
Well, as we learned last meeting, or the meeting before, in the state codebook, in the state, in the state statute, in the book of state statutes, which we cannot be more lenient than, it says 1452-201, number of police officers. It says the city council in cities of the first class shall, by general ordinance, direct the number of subordinate police officers to be appointed. In our municipal codebook, we used to have a chapter that said, a part that said, Chapter 2.48, Police Department, established. There is established that a police department of the city which shall consist of the chief of police and such police officers as the councils, council shall prescribe by resolution or ordinance. Each member of the police department shall be appointed by the mayor and confirmed by the council pursuant to the provisions of this article. They shall receive such compensation as shall be determined by ordinance or resolution, and such compensation shall be in lieu of all special fees, rewards, or remuneration arising from such police service. And it directs you to municipal code 78, 2.44.01. So, our mayor has tried to tell us that the employee, the personal policy handbook with the employee policies, not only overrides our municipal code, which says how the police department shall be done, and he's also, he's also tried to tell us that this overrides this and this. Now, if this is more lenient than this, it doesn't fly. It does not fly. Couple meetings ago, if you look at the tapes, it was the first meeting we started talking about this. So the state code, the state code, which we cannot be more lenient than, we can be stricter than it, says the city council in cities of the first class shall, by general ordinance, direct the number of subordinate police officers to be appointed. All I'm saying, and we can, we don't have to do anything right now, it's not a big rush, we're, we don't have to be hasty about this, we don't have to be hasty about coming into compliance with state law, although we could if we wanted to.
I'll move to table it until the next meeting.
Ms. Powell.
Second.
Yeah, you got a motion made seconded?
Motion, second.
For a discussion. Go ahead.
As was stated previously, and it's in the minutes of discussion, employee handbook is where all this started, was to be part of the goals workshop, which was one of the stickies that we got. If there is a, and I thought, I heard somebody say that there's someone meeting reviewing the employee handbook, is there an ongoing committee that's reviewing that now, or was that something else?
Not that I'm aware of.
But if they do, the only other, the only other thing...
It would be y'all that did that.
Would be the only other thing that, because this was written the last time...
We have a point of order. We have a motion and a second to...
Need to call for discussion.
To defer this... To defer this till the next meeting?
Till the next meeting, and we're discussing whether or not we should defer it. I'm hearing you discuss something.
I'm trying to clarify something. Excuse me.
I'm sorry. That's a point of order. We are talking about deferring this, right, and that's what you're discussing.
It can be discussed later.
I mean, that was my question. Point of order is asking whether or not this is what Mr. Pennant's discussing.
Mr. Powell.
The thing I was trying to make a point of it is part of our goals workshop, and the other point that I was trying to lewd to by explaining what was discussed already is that if there is anyone, and the last one was written by the police chief and the finance director working on the employee handbook, is that there is a paragraph in the handbook that talks about unless there is, contrary to Arkansas law, is just be aware that when that handbook is looked at, that there is a paragraph in there that would conflict or could possibly cause a conflict whenever we're looking at that.
Okay. Motion made and seconded to defer. Ms. Balance.
Well, I know the motion is to defer, and I guess if we've been out of compliance with state law for this long, I guess it wouldn't hurt another two weeks to go ahead and be, still be out of compliance with state law, although it kinda bothers me, all the areas we're out of compliance with state law, so...
You stated that already.
Thank you for interrupting me.
No, ma'am. You interrupted yourself. Mr. DeVito?
Well, since there's no, no problem with delaying it, I mean, we can get the chief of police here the next time this gets on the table. I think it's an appropriate move on our part with respect to the police department, since we are discussing employees, that he be here to help us make these decisions. It's only out of respect that I ask that to be considered by council.
Ms. Balance.
That would be great, and then he could try to explain to us why he's out of compliance with state code when he's the top law enforcement officer in our city.
Call for the vote. Mr. Powell.
Well, one last comment for the delay. With all due respect, and I don't want to insult anyone, this is on the workshop, goal workshop agenda. I believe that it would be appropriate for when that update meeting is set, we've only just had one, it only took us seven, almost eight months to get it after requesting it be put on the agenda. As Mr. DeVito said, I don't see any reason for it to be rushed through, is that I would like to see the workshop, if that ends up being one of the goals of the council, is to clarify that, I'd like to see it put on to the workshop, left on the workshop instead of just being delayed until the next meeting.
You want to take it off the agenda?
With the chief. I move that we take it off the agenda and leave it on the work, council workshop as we approved last meeting.
Point of order.
He's still got a motion on the table. All right. Restate your motion again, sir.
I'll withdraw my motion if he wants to go to a workshop and allow the chief to attend the next meeting, if there's going to be a workshop between now and the next meeting.
Mr. Berry. All right. Motion's to withdraw from the agenda, put in a workshop on the personnel manual issue regarding the police department hiring of officers.
I'll second that.
Made and seconded? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Are you opposed?
Present.
Five to one. Next one up's the Tahoe issue. Again? Mr. Powell.
Motion to discuss.
Second.
Made? Seconded? Discuss.
The comment, and I say this as respectfully as I can, Mr. Mayor, that at the end of, you were trying to do good, I understand that. However, for the sake of clarification, is the only reason I wanted to bring this back to the table, there's conflict in the state code as far as disposition of city property, and there was an act that was just passed in the last legislation that perfectly allowed the mayor to dispose of that, donate that vehicle to another governmental agency. I believe that, if I'm not mistaken, you and I were on the same sheet of music.
Yes, we were.
You were getting one, one word, and I was getting the other. I just wanted to make certain that it was clarified, that I wasn't headhunting, I was just trying to make sure that the mayor was doing the right thing. The only thing that I'm now questioning and concerned about is making sure that, the last thing that was discussed in that recent act is that, and it's not up to us to change state conflicting codes, is that it talked about making sure that the city equipment listing was up to date once that vehicle was removed from the city inventory, and since code says that council's responsible for all real and personal property of this city, I would, the only thing I would ask is that this body be presented, whoever keeps the hallowed book of city property, show us what there is.
We'll make sure you get that.
And if there isn't, we need to start one.
Good.
Because that's what the act says that you will do. You can give it away, which was done properly, which was not done properly under one section, under financial, but under the other one, but even before the act came into effect, I was reading one section, getting guidance that this is what had to be done if it was given away, donated, financial responsibility, there was another, and then when the last legislation met, they clarified the financial responsibility part with the act, I can't remember what the number was.
622.
622, that clarified that the mayor can donate property under certain circumstances without council approval, as long as the equipment list is updated. So shame, shame on both of us for not agreeing with the state. But everything was done copacetic.
Mr. Effion.
Is there a dollar value on that? Could we give a little...
Yes, sir, there is.
Five thousand?
It's less than $5,000. Yes, sir. I don't think you were on council yet when I put out a letter to everybody or a note to everybody that described this transaction. Ms. Balance.
I understand that this, the state legislature has made a statute that says that perhaps you could give away property. However, as we know, city code can be stricter than state code. Our city code, Chapter 3.08, disposal of city-owned property, Section 30801, authorized. A, the mayor or the mayor's duly authorized representative may sell or exchange any city-owned supplies, materials, or equipment without competitive bidding if such supplies, materials, or equipment have a value of less than $5,000. Did you sell that car?
It's an intergovernmental transfer.
No, no, no. I'm asking you, did you sell that car?
It's an intergovernmental transfer to another county agency.
Did you sell the car?
No, ma'am, I didn't need to sell it.
Did you exchange it?
I'm not gonna argue with you about it.
I'm asking you.
It's in writing in front of me.
Okay, so it's in writing in front of me.
Yes.
You did not sell that, you did not exchange that. Our city code says you may sell or exchange. It doesn't say you can give away. So we're probably looking at illegal exaction and malfeasance. Because city code can be stronger than state code, and this is stronger than state code. It says you may sell or exchange. You did not sell it, you did not exchange it.
We exchange it for tourism, coming to town, tax money?
That's...
It doesn't count?
I wouldn't think so. It's not...
Well, then if you're gonna threaten me with malfeasance...
I'm not threatening you with anything. Do you feel threatened?
That's what you just said.
Do you feel threatened?
Did you just say that, Ms. Balance?
I'm saying it could be.
Is it a matter of record, Ms. Clark, that she said that?
Point of order. The reason for, for putting it on the agenda was to clarify both, both positions. I make a motion that it be removed from the agenda.
Thank you, sir. Do you second? Doug? All in favor?
Present.
Thank you, ma'am. Removed. Done deal.
I move to take 15 minute break.
Not 15, that's too long. You could break for 15, we'll be back earlier.
Robert's rules of order. If you remove, I can move to recess for however long. Takes a second, it does not get debate. You vote on it or you don't. 15 minute break. Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Are you opposed? We've got people waiting in the hall.
Somebody knows.
Not enough.
One no, two no.
Two no. Mr. Weaver, before we get started here, I'm gonna have you give us a definition of how an ordinance is either more stringent or less stringent than state law. Could you please explain your understanding of that, sir?
Well, to make it absolutely clear as mud, state law preempts certain fields and does not allow us to legislate in those. When it does, we cannot change what the code or what these statutes make. But the state, in its wisdom, has allowed local ordinances to be adopted, which in certain instances can change or modify what otherwise is state law. And typically, we cannot make something that is non-criminal or non-enforceable that is in state law, but we have the right to restrict something further unless the state has preempted that area. And there are certain areas the state preempts and says you can't stringently make it. So it's kind of, the table is debated four or five times about, can we do this, can we do that? We can't do this, we can't do that. You can make some things stronger, you cannot make other things stronger. So there's not really a bright line of what you are talking about, quite on the restriction of what has been bantered at this table several times. There are areas the state will not let you make it different.
How do you know?
Excuse me? By looking at the code, by looking at the statutes to see what they have preempted. You cannot in, say, for instance, restrict freedom of speech, just as an example, not that, but there are restrictions on when you go into, billboard issue came up a little while ago. There are certain rules that you cannot prescribe against billboards that are protected not only by the state law but by federal, where the feds or the state have preempted your ability, you can't make it more strict in certain areas. Would be an example.
Honey?
Not that I'm, have a degree in law, but one of the first planning training sessions I went to is a good example of what Mr. Weaver is just addressing. In state code, in establishing a planning commission, the code states that planning commissioners can be paid. Our code says that we work for no pay. That's lessening or strengthening, I don't know which way you'd want to look at it, debatable, but you could look at it the other way. If state code says that commissioners cannot serve with compensation, and we've tried writing an ordinance that said that we're gonna pay the planning commissioners, then we'd be in violation of state law, where we're doing less than what state law says by saying that we aren't going to pay our commissioners, is the best example that I'd ever heard and understood as far as what we could and couldn't do with ordinance.
It's not just setting driving. At some point comes a ludi.
Very, very gray.
All right, back to the matter at hand, under due business, we have number one, we'll call votes, Mr. Balance and Mr. Raphael. Motion to discuss.
Dwelling, I'll defend my vote.
Oh, okay, my bad. Beverly, come on up.
Already treated her bad enough.
I missed that.
That's according to her permission.
Yeah.
Okay, I brought this before, but it got tabled, so I think that everything that I've written to you is self-explanatory. We have been working on this since February of this year, and it started out that we were going to try to require these units to have business licenses and to get inspected. So we did have a packed house of most everybody that owned multifamily dwellings. So we believe that we have been in the paper long enough, been on the planning commission on the television long enough, that everybody knows about this. What happened was when the, our city code was adopted, ordinance 1816 in the year 2000, it made restrictions against multifamily dwellings in R1. You had to have a CUP now. And that, when this was done, a list of the existing multifamily units was not made. So at this point, the building official can't tell you if this multifamily dwelling is legal or illegal unless he took it to court. They showed proof of when it was built, and nobody wants to go through all that. So I believe that, and the planning commission, if you will adopt this, and I don't know at what point in your codebook or what place, the B&amp;Bs were put in as an appendix when it was done for them, this list needs to be listed in our codebook as legally non-conforming so that from here forward, if somebody turns their home into an apartment, the police department and the building official will be able to tell if it's illegal. So I just need y'all to make a motion to send this to the city attorney to get it in the right form to be added to your codebook.
Question? Mr. Weaver?
Well, I would make a motion that we instruct the city attorney to include these units as per the planning commission's instructions into an ordinance, so that we can adopt it into code.
Second?
Second.
Made in seconded?
Aye.
Need for a discussion? Mr. Pennow?
Unfortunately, I've only heard from one person writing that they make a very strong case of not grandfathering, and the last sentence basically says grandfathering is for instances where laws change and a building is already in use for what suddenly become illegal, not to give amnesty to those who are blatantly violating the law by making what is illegal suddenly legal. And I'd like that as part of what the city attorney looks at as far as if we're not, I mean, everybody can have a concern that their neighbors, if their house is turned into illegally nonconforming multifamily dwelling, but whenever there is some statement of apparent law and violation of city code and other concerns that have been brought up, I just-
Want to address that?
Yes, ma'am, you may.
We had public hearings over this because we received both sides of the coin, and we had lots of people come and speak on both sides of the issue. The bottom line is, are we, as a city, going to take every one of these to court to find out when they were built? Was it before our law or after? Are we going to do that? Or are we going to make a start and go forward? And the planning commission has, we heard, not from just one, we heard from several on both sides, and it's been very interesting. But it's all in, and we had people that wanted to make sure that they went into every one of these dwellings and got inspections, and we had, you know, people on the other side saying unless you have a subpoena, you can't go in there, you know? We had it all, and we did work on this long and hard, and we believe that what you're going to do, and what we need to do, is make, make a point and go forward. And those few that did slip in, you might call it amnesty, I might, I say it was negligence the first time we wrote these laws, but we're human.
So, it's my understanding that we're in a R1 zoning where we're basically allowing these residences to technically become R3, multifamily dwellings.
In 2000, our codebook changed, and it said that no longer are we going to allow multifamily dwellings in R1 without a CUP in 2000. But at that point, no one took the initiative to find out what multifamily dwellings we had in R1.
Ms. Lanketip, I appreciate all the work that you and the planning commission have done. Can you explain once again, I'm pretty well familiar with what the word legally nonconforming means, but can you explain that again, what that encompasses and how that impacts these residents?
Legally nonconforming. Right now, as of 2000, the year 2000, our codebook says you cannot be a multifamily dwelling, which is three or more units. You cannot be that in R1 unless you have a CUP. But there were some that were already there, apartment houses or multifamily dwellings, that were there before that law was made. So, they are legally nonconforming. They're nonconforming because our law doesn't allow them there now, but they're legally nonconforming because they were there before the law. And we just need to get this into the code so that we can go forward and not allow more homes to be turned into apartments illegally. Yes.
Okay, so if one of these units either ceases to become an apartment or multifamily dwelling, or if they expand, then they have to conform to code and become, get a CUP.
Correct.
Or it reverts back to, or if they become vacant for a period of time, six months, then it reverts back to either single family or two-family residence.
Correct. Correct.
This is basically establishing that these are units being used for multifamily dwellings. For whatever reason, if they either are vacant, become vacant, or decide to expand, then they have to conform to the existing law.
Correct. And somebody asked me, what if I don't have them all listed? Well, if I've missed one, which I think is highly unlikely, because like I said, we've been working on this since February, we've had public hearings over it with a packed house, it's been in the newspaper a lot of times, but if we missed one, here's the scenario. So, everybody at home needs to pay attention. If we missed one and there's another multifamily unit that was there before the year 2000, and it's not on this list, and the building inspector comes across it, he is going to give them a citation, and then that one will have to go to court and legally prove that it was in existence before the year 2000, and then come back to this table and get added to the list. You know, that's going to be the scenario. So, you know, make sure that if you're a multifamily unit owner in R1, that you are on the list. But we've said that a lot of times at our planning commission and at the public hearing and put it in the paper, so I believe that this is accurate.
Anybody else? Thank you, ma'am. All right. Did we have a motion on the table? Want to go in the second?
It was seconded.
Okay.
But we need a vote.
Motion to submit to the city attorney for perusal and addition to the city code.
What are we asking the city attorney to do?
Motion to send the information to the city attorney so he can create a code and integrate it into the, oh, thank you, ordinance and integrate it into the-
Add that list to the code.
Aye.
Anybody understand the motion?
This list.
And it's been seconded. Need for a discussion?
Just to clarify, they're referencing strictly the list, not any other-
What she submitted to the council. Need for a discussion? Not. Call for a vote. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carried.
Can I just say one more thing? While we were looking at all this information and going back and going through code, we did find out that the section of your code that lists your business licenses, it is missing apartment house owners, hospitals, several different things that you might just want to look at at this table again. It makes a music teacher get a license, but it doesn't say anything about apartment house owners, so-
Parking lot owners.
Our parking lots, right. But there's a section that says all services and businesses not listed, but just, we just found that, so I thought you might be interested.
Thank you, Beverly. All right, moving on now, it is number two. If my numeration is correct, roll call votes, Ms. Ballance and Mr. Raphael.
Didn't they move them to number two?
Yeah, Walmart's number two.
Well, we did, but I had forgotten about the multifamily dwellings. So, the roll call vote should be short.
Point of order, we put them in number two.
I'm just trying to be fair with everybody. This will be the issue with the information I put in your box today in reference to two items from prospective Walmart stores. We have gentlemen here to speak on the issue.